We'll call this meeting to order the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for December 11th, 2018. We'll call Mr. Beeter.
Leyland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Maxman.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
White.
Here, having a moment of silence to reflect on our actions of the day. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Have the agenda received as proposed or is it not?
Second.
Move to the second, any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carried, public comments. Anybody from the public like comment about anything other than what's on the agenda? Moving on to claims and payments. Claims and payments to receive and approve expenditures for the county?
The county's expenditures this week total $210,871.63. Motion to approve.
Second.
Move to the second, any discussion? This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures for Country View Care Facility.
The expenditures for Country View this week that will be paid total $92,024.52. We're holding off on paying October and November benefits and claims for the county, which is approximately $565,000, and Country View has a balance this morning of approximately $544,000 in their bank.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to the second, any discussion on this item? This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a presentation, fiscal year 18 audit presentation presented by Miranda Winlandt from Clifton Larson Allen LLP. Good morning.
Good morning.
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 All right, as was stated, my name is Miranda Winlandt. I'm with Clifton Larson Allen, and I'm here today to present the results of the fiscal year 2018 audit. In front of you this morning, you have three packets. The stapled, smaller packet here is the required communications with governance. The large packet here is the audited financial statements. And the third one here is the smaller bound packet, that's also the presentation that's in front of you that I will be going over. All right, so we'll start with some of the required communications between auditors and governance, then look at the financial highlights, discuss the results of the 2018 audit from a finding and recommendation perspective, look at the federal award recommendations. We also tested Iowa state compliance, so we'll give you an update on the status of our testing there, and then we'll wrap up with a short conclusion. Right, so as auditors, it's our responsibility to provide an opinion on whether or not the financial statements are materially and properly stated. We do that with a risk-based audit approach. That means we don't look at every financial transaction that runs through the county's operations in any one year. We do a risk assessment based on inquiries that we've done with management, we review board meeting minutes, we review internal controls as well as county policy and procedure, and develop an audit plan based on that. We do a lot of testing on the balance sheet accounts. We confirm your cash and investments, your debt, your amounts due from other governments with third parties. We take a look at the net pension liability as provided by IFRS, and also rely on a specialist for the OPEB liability. So there's a lot of outside confirmation that occurs on the balance sheet. When we look at the income statement, we're doing a lot of analytical procedures, looking at revenues year-over-year, expenditures year-over-year, and also comparing against budget. We also do select some samples of both revenues and expenditures to do our detailed testing. All right, so with the financial statements, our audit opinion is included in the financial statements, and we just ask that anytime anything is reported, that that audit opinion be kept with the audited financial statements. The key accounting policies and procedures are outlined in note one to the financial statements. There was one significant change in accounting policy this year, and that relates to GASB-75 and the OPEB liability. The OPEB has been reported, OPEB meaning other post-employment benefits, has been reported on the county financial statements in the past. Just the Government Accounting Standards Board has changed the way it's measured and how it's reported and disclosed. So as a result of that change, the county has restated beginning net position to be in compliance with that new accounting standard. The restatement was about $1.4 million, and that was split between governmental activities and your enterprise funds. This results in a larger OPEB liability reported on the financial statements. As of the end of '18, that liability is $3.5 million compared to about $2 million in the prior year. Management has presented us with a representation letter indicating their approval of the audited financial statements, and their belief that all financial transactions have been properly accounted for and presented within the statements. We experienced no delays in performing the audit. We had no issues that were discussed prior to our retention as independent auditors. There were no disagreements with management that could be material to the financial statements, and we are not aware of any consultations with other accountants. We did not have any proposed adjustments to the financial statements, meaning the numbers in the financial statements here agree to what is in the accounting system and has been presented to you over the past 12 months. All right, so if we look at the financial statements here, we can break that down into five sections, the first being the introductory section, then we get into the basic financial statements, that's where all the numbers are, then we go into the required supplementary information, some statistics on the operating results of the county compared to other demographics, and then finally, the last section of the report is the single audit section that relates to your federal awards, as well as includes the schedule of findings and question costs. All right, so in the next section here, we'll take a pretty high-level snapshot of the results for 2018. Starting with your general fund, revenues came in at $41.1 million compared to expenditures of $40 million, $40.3 million. There were some other financing sources and uses which resulted in a net change to your general fund operations of $494,000 as a positive change to your fund balance. Started the year with $18.1 million in fund balance and ended with $18.6 million in fund balance, which can be broken down into non-spendable, restricted, and unassigned balance. Most of your balance, about $15.3 million of that is in unassigned, meaning it's available for government spending. Looking at your mental health operations, revenues came in at $5.7 million compared to expenditures of $6.4, that resulted in expenditures exceeding revenue by about $737,000, reducing overall fund balance. Your fund balance went from $1.5 million down to about $740,000, but that was a planned reduction in fund balance by the social service region. That was budgeted for and expected. Rural services, revenues came in at $4.3 million, expenditures at $2.1, were also transfers to the secondary road fund of $2.3 million, resulting in a net change of a deficit of $177,000. So overall fund balance went from $1.6 million to about $1.5 million. That fund balance is restricted as to the purpose in which it can be spent. Secondary roads, revenues at $4.8 million compared to expenditures of about $8 million in expenditures, also transfers in from that rural service fund of about $3.4 million, also some proceeds on the sale of capital assets within that number. Overall, there was a positive change in secondary roads, $232,000. There was an increase in overall spending in that fund, primarily due to the purchase of three motor graders in 2018. Your debt service fund, expenditures came in at $8.4 million and exceeded revenue by about $1.7 million, bringing your fund balance from $5.3 million down to about $3.6 million in your debt service fund. Capital projects, there were no bonds issued, so there's no financing sources in the capital project fund for 2018. The county did continue to spend down bond funds from previous years as projects continued and started during 2018. There were project expenditures of about $3.6 million, bringing your ending fund balance down to about $2.4 million, and that is made up of unspent bond proceeds, so that is restricted as well as to what the county can spend that fund. Your non-major funds, this is kind of the aggregate category, everything that doesn't fit in one of the other funds that's restricted to its purpose is captured in this non-major fund. Overall, there was a negative change in fund balance, primarily due to some of the spending in the Friends of Hartman Reserve Fund. $287,000 was the change in fund balance there, bringing the ending fund balance to about $1.7 million. So if we break down those non-major funds, again, those funds are restricted, and here's kind of what they're restricted for. The largest component still being Friends Apartment Reserve at $876,000 of the $6.7 million in fund balance there. And we'll take a look at the enterprise funds, the largest being Country View Care Facility. Overall, the net change was a negative $63,000, and that's primarily due to a $1.5 million subsidy received from the general fund during the year. Revenues were down from the prior year while expenditures continued to increase. Ending fund balance is a deficit of $1.8 million in Country View as of the end of the year. Your non-major enterprise funds, that includes your rural water and sewer funds. Overall, expenditures exceeded revenue, but that's primarily due to depreciation expense, which is a non-cash expense. So if we're looking at cash flows, there was a positive cash flow for the year in those funds, but when depreciation is recognized, overall, there was a negative, or it shows as a net loss. But it's important to keep in mind that there was a positive cash flow with your enterprise funds. So the information presented so far is on a modified basis. This doesn't include, your fund level statements don't include your long-term assets or your long-term liabilities. So the government-wide statements add back those assets and liabilities. So as of June 30, 2018, the governmental activities recognized about $104 million in net capital assets, so that cost of those assets is about $174 million, offset by about $70 million in accumulated depreciation. That's up from about $100 million in the prior year. Business-type activities, not a lot of capital acquisition in those funds, so we're seeing a decrease in your net capital assets. Last year was at $3.6 million compared to about $3.3 million this year. Looking at your long-term obligations, also broken down by governmental versus business-type. Total governmental activities, now this includes your net pension liability and your OPEB liability, also vacation and sick time, so this captures all liabilities to the county that are long-term in nature, at $46.3 million as of the end of the year compared to $53.2 million in the prior year. Some of the net pension liability and OPEB have increased while your general obligation debt has decreased due to debt payments. Looking at your business-type activities, was $7.1 million last year compared to about $7.3 million this year. So again, that's the increase in employee benefit portion, the net OPEB liability and the pension liability. Looking at your long-term obligations, the governmental debt is scheduled to be paid off in 2026 with some fairly large debt payments in the next two to three years. Your business-type activities, that debt will be paid off in 2019. So here we have a summary of how we get from those fund balances that are reported on one statement to the entity-wide balance. So we go from $33 million on a modified basis to $98.9 million for your governmental activities as a whole. It's important to note of that amount, that's not all available for spending. $85.6 million of that represents what the county's invested in capital assets, that's your assets less any debt against those assets. About $15 million of that is restricted, so that actually leaves unrestricted net position as a deficit balance of about $1.6 million, which is what we've seen with other entities. They're in a similar position with their government-wide financial statements after the addition of the net pension liability two to three years ago. All right, so a measure of the county's financial performance is to look at the number of months of expenditures that are available in fund balance. Typically, what's recommended for a healthy fund balance is three to five months, meaning you didn't have any income coming in, you could pay your bills based on this year's spending for three to five months. It's a better performance measure for an operating fund, so we look more, mostly at the general fund when we're looking at this performance measure. The county is currently at 4.6 months, so you're at the higher, the higher end of that benchmark. There was a slight decrease, last year you were at 4.8, but you also had more capital expenditures coded to your general fund this year, and the amount of expenditures can impact that calculation. So 4.6 months is a very healthy fund balance for your general fund. All right, so as part of the audit, we evaluate internal controls, but we don't give an opinion on those controls. If we do come across anything that we consider to be an improvement or a way to improve controls, we like to bring that to your attention. We have two recommendations. We do not consider these material weaknesses in internal controls by any means, so we just want to bring those to your attention as a significant deficiency in internal control. The first one relates to segregation of duties, and this is specifically within the financial system, so we're looking at IT controls. And we want to make sure that if the system is capable of limiting access to individuals, that the county is evaluating that and making sure those controls are in place. For example, if you have someone that's able to process payroll, if you can limit their ability to change pay rates or change hours in the system or enter employees, the system then has automated controls that allow for a better control system. So we're recommending that that be evaluated on a periodic basis and as employment changes to make sure that those system controls are in place. The second one relates to cash reconciliations. The county is managing a significant cash balance, as of the end of the year, it's about $40 million. We're just recommending that the various reconciliation processes be consolidated, and someone take overall responsibility for that cash reconciliation, and document their review and approval of the cash reconciliation on a monthly basis. Cash is being reconciled, we just want to see that another set of eyes is being documented and reviewing those reconciliations. All right, the next section here is on the federal awards. Total federal spending for 2018 was about $1.5 million. Anytime the county spends over $750,000, it triggers a single audit requirement, meaning we need to take a look at the individual programs. We do a risk assessment, and we need to make sure we test 40% of the total federal expenditures. This year, to get that, at that coverage level, we needed to test three programs. We tested hospital preparedness, HIV care formula grants, as well as the hazard mitigation grant. So when we do the testing over those grants, we look at internal controls as well as compliance, and we just had one minor recommendation related to the HIV care formula grants. They submit monthly claims, and the department asks that the claims be submitted within 45 days from the end of the month, the department being the agency that they receive the funding from. And we selected a sample of five, and three of five were not submitted within that 45-day period, so we just recommend implementing procedures there to make sure you're meeting that compliance requirement. We also evaluated state compliance and tested several different areas this year, also based on a risk assessment, and we noted no instances of non-compliance with state regulations, state code. Like to thank everyone that's involved with the audit. We enjoy coming out. Everyone's very organized, and the audit schedules that we get are very well-prepared, and the information is received timely, so makes our job a lot easier. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Miranda.
Thank you.
Next, we'll receive project updates from department heads and elected officials. Morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Board, Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. Just a brief update on the road conditions, they're all fine this morning. Today, we do expect some, possibly some freezing rain moving in in the early morning hours tomorrow. We'll be, we'll be prepared for that. I did want to remind everyone that if you are interested in the statewide road conditions, a good option is to call 511, and then you can just enter the road name or number that you're interested in, and you can get a full report on the road conditions throughout the state of Iowa. Just a brief update on our Finchford Road Bridge. I had told you that we were, we had some issues with the, on the bearings and the bolts going into those bearings. Our structural engineering consultants, they have located a specialty contractor who believes they can perform that work, and they're putting together a plan for us, and I'll keep you posted, and we're hopeful that in the next few weeks, they can come out there and perform that work. Can I answer any questions at this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other department heads or elected officials? Moving on to minutes approved for December 4th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Move to the second, any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carried. We'll have a hearing, a 9:05 hearing on the proposed speed zone for Kimball Avenue as soon as we're through with the rest of the agenda. Number eight on the agenda is consent agenda by resalition.
So moved.
Second.
Move to the second, any discussion on the item? This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This is contracts and agreements, this is a resolution at the cooperative agreement for professional services between Blackhawk County and Grundy County to split the cost for all engineering studies and reports completed by outside consultants. We propose improvements to Grundy Road between Zeneta Road, North Plate to Iowa Highway 30 be approved and directed to chair design for same as recommended by Katherine Nicholas, county engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Move to the second, Kathy.
Yeah, so this was in our, this is budgeted in our professional services line item for this year, this fiscal year. We're sharing costs with Grundy County. We're estimating that the archaeological studies and the geotechnical borings will cost approximately We did just have the archaeological study completed, Phase One, we call it, just an overview look by an archaeologist in that quarter. They did not find anything, so we're hopeful that that concludes the archaeological study in that quarter. So this agreement just agrees to split the costs with Grundy County.
Is that our portion of it, or is that the total cost?
That's the total cost, about $18,300.
Right. Anything else, Kathy?
No.
Thank you very much. Any other department heads? Moving on to other businesses, the motion at the holiday schedule for Blackhawk County.
Need a vote on that.
All in favor, this is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is other businesses, the motion at the holiday schedule for Blackhawk County offices approved as follows, New Year's Day, January 1st, 19...
So moved.
Second.
Move to the second, any discussion on any of them? This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
I think it's just a motion.
Motion. Oh, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carried. This is a motion at the request for personal capital equipment for Windows Server in the amount of $1,872.48 from CDWG submitted by Kim Beeter, IT Director, we approve and Director/Chair to sign for same.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carried. Motion to authorize the Director/Finance Director to set the date of hearing, be held at 9:05 on December 26, 2018, in Boardroom 201, Blackhawk County Courthouse. Legend Amendment. Move to the second, any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carried. Next, the resolution to accept $15,000 from the Bass family and apply the same in full satisfaction on the account of a deceased Country View resident, and further to recognize the Bass family for their generosity in making this offering and for their appreciation of the quality services provided by Country View staff. Move to the second, any discussion on this? This is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a 9:05 hearing, it is now 9:27. Proposed speed zones on Kimball Avenue. Motion received and placed on file proof of publication of notice of public hearing.
So moved.
Move to the second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carried. Motion to weigh the first reading as notice was published.
Second.
Move to the second, any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carried. At speed zone number 104, 45 mile per hour, Kimball Avenue. At speed zone 105, 55 miles per hour on Kimball Avenue to a section. Kathy?
So currently, as a person travels south on Kimball Avenue out of the city limits, it's 30 miles per hour in the city Waterloo, and then it goes immediately to 55 miles an hour. The Department of Transportation has recommended that we use a stepped increase to go from 45 to 55, for example. Law enforcement has told us that they prefer that as well, so these two speed limits would allow that, would create the 45, and then the 55 was already there, but it would give us a place to put the new signs.
Do you have any comments on any of these?
No.
No. Grant, did you have any written?
Yes, sir.
Motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carried. This is a resolution to suspend rules requiring the Board of Supervisors to consider and vote on the proposed ordinance at two prior meetings.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? This is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This is a resolution that the proposed speed zones for Kimball Avenue be approved as recommended by Katherine Nicholas, county engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a work session with the Urban Coalition, 2019 legislative priorities.
Take a couple minutes to set up tables.
All right.
Eric Swager. Hey, how you doing?
Good.
Hello. Very good. Let you in here, huh? Let you in here. Scared you guys over the other way. Very good. What's going on, anyway? Huh? Oh, yeah.
Today was an easy one.
You don't mess around.
Yeah, it was. I am plugged in. So I am plugged in.
Okay. All right. Why don't I? He's already out.
He's a prank.
The window lets you go on.
Yeah. He burped.
That's okay, but I just wanted to let you know that.
All right.
Good job. I don't know, some people like it back there.
Some people what?
Last long. Yeah, you all know what to do. I know it. It's pretty normal. That's what you're gonna have to do. I don't know, it's something nothing too. And she has one. I just wonder if we shouldn't take this. It's true. Oh, we can do this, just connect to the other. There's the big one off.
Good morning.
Can you hear me? Two.
Good morning.
Yeah, I hope that's right.
Okay, thank you for.
I'll follow it.
Just a couple minutes, we'll get started.
She's there?
But he's a great kid, I think the world. Whenever you are.
I'm ready.
I don't know. We're now back in session.
This is the Urban County Coalition, 2018 Legislative Priorities. Mr. Maxman, you want to take the floor?
Sure. I want to thank all of our representatives that have taken their time to join us, go over the Urban County Coalition's priorities for fiscal or for legislative year 2019. We have some distinguished legislative individuals here with today. Our two senators, Bill Dotsler and Jeff Danielson, and our legislators, Bob Kresik and Timmy Powers. And then we have on the phone, joining us, Sandy Solomon is also here with us today. So I've provided you with our priorities and I'd like to go through those, and then we have our lobbyists with us here today, Larry Murphy and Gary Grant are also here, so they can answer any of these issues in depth. The five county coalition is made up of Scott County, Dubuque County, Lynn County, Johnson County, and Blackhawk County. So when you're down there doing your business at the legislature and you have questions on anything concerning counties, those two individuals would be one option. Otherwise, I'd suggest you contact our Tom Little, so that he can help you out through any of these projects.
He'll be the chief.
Seriously, any of our board members, any of our other elected officials in the county can provide you with information as you need it, as you go through the legislation. Certainly, one of the key areas that we're looking at, again, is the backfill. State made the commitment several years ago to provide a reduction in property taxes for industry and commercial properties. There were many other components that reduced the property value in other areas that are not part of the backfill and that the county is exorbitant those costs now. Those costs of backfill, if the state was not to live up to their obligation, Susan, correct me, but I believe it's about a million dollars a year that Blackhawk County would incur and either have to reduce services, or we would have to increase the taxes by that amount in order to cover those costs. Now, that also involves city governments and school districts, but, you know, we're here to talk about county, and I guess I'd like to hear some feedback, what you're hearing, whether there's any type of movement. The other comment I'd make before you address this is that when we started this, the anticipation was that we would see about a 5% increase in our property values when this law went into effect and reduced the obligations on commercial and industrial property. Fact is, Blackhawk County has been one of the slowest growth counties in the state of Iowa. We only grew 1% for the last five years. So what we thought that was projected, that we'd have a 5% increase annually, we've only had a 5% over a five-year period. So this whole process hasn't lived up to what the promises made, and the state made the promises to continue to fund the backfill, which I think is excess of one hundred and twenty-five million plus. So if I can get some feedback, I'd appreciate it, and Sandy, you're welcome to join in whenever.
Okay. Well, I, just Sandy Solomon here. I know that it's something that's been on the skyline for a couple years now, to do something with this issue. Now, the feeling is, is that when this was, backfill was put into place, that it was not promised that it would go forever, you know, just to make it, you know, kind of make that clear. That said, I know that there's a couple aspects of this that we're looking at, and that is, one, the counties that haven't realized the economic growth, I think there's a desire to give consideration there. And then the other aspect of it is, is that if we do repeal the backfill, it will likely be phased in over, I don't know, maybe, I don't know how many years exactly that could be, maybe four or five years. That's the talk I've heard about that. So that's kind of, that's what I know about that, thus far. I think there's definite interest in taking up this issue, and I don't know exactly where it'll go this coming session, but, you know, I know we've had this discussion before in the last couple of years, and so I think you're pretty aware of it, that's what I know right now about it.
Okay, thank you. I guess it was always my perception that when this legislation was passed, is that it was promised by the state that it would be covered, and I know bodies change as far as the new people coming on, but it was my understanding that this was something that state was obligated into the future and not to have a cutoff date on.
I'd like to address that. I was on the subcommittee that worked on it, and then eventually the conference committee that reconciled the difference between the House and the Senate. And Representative Salmon might be being told that never was supposed to be forever, but that was a deal that was agreed to by Speaker Paulson and Senator Gronstall with the final decision on whether we would move forward with it. And I would have to say that that piece of legislation, would it never pass the Iowa Senate if that guarantee wasn't there? But I do realize that one legislative body, General Assembly, cannot behold another General Assembly to something else, and there lies the rub. But it was supposed to have been basically etched into stone, and we do know, last year, there were bills that floated through the Iowa Senate Ways and Means Committee by Republican senators to eliminate it completely, and I would agree with Senator Salmon that they thought that if they did get rid of it, it would take several years to do that. But regardless, it still is pushing, I think, the state's obligation on our cities and counties to make up the difference when the state of Iowa said that we think this is important enough for economic development to have a commercial property tax cut, that we will, on the state level, make up the loss if we don't see that kind of growth. And I'm adamantly opposed to eliminating it. I don't believe the taxpayers of Blackhawk County should have to pay for a decision that was made on the state legislative level.
Thank you.
Was that discussed last year up there?
Yes.
And it came to the conclusion, I thought they were gonna phase it out slowly, or?
Man, that was one of the bills that we worked on in the House with Dave Jacoby, ranking member of Ways and Means on that side, and that was the thought that the best deal they were gonna get was to phase it out, and then they stopped. Of course, it was an election year.
Yeah.
So I would say that next year's not, and next year might be a great time for them to dive into that legislation again. And so I'm back on Ways and Means with Representative Jacoby, so I'm sure it's something in the House that we'll be looking at, and I'm sure that Senator Dotsler and Danielson will be looking at, and then their Ways and Means Committee.
I just would add, too, that all you have to do is go around all the infrastructure that's in place within our counties, with our cities, our schools, you know, you can just look and see that there are some needs, and it's gonna take tax revenue to upgrade those needs. So the proposal by the majority party would be to cut the funding, the backfill, and I think it's gonna be devastating to Iowa taxpayers, because then what's the county left with, or the cities left with? What are the school districts left with? Raising property taxes. And so, you know, and the whole concept of these so-called cuts, we're supposed to grow the economy, and that's all I heard. That's all I heard, and I'm sure you did, too. Well, we haven't seen that. The other part, too, I think is troubling, if you look at the counties in Iowa, about seventy-two of the ninety-nine counties are losing population. So that's another aspect that some of your rural Iowa communities are really gonna have a tough time with this. And hopefully, the legislature will listen and learn some of the struggles, maybe go and see, visually see what's going on. I think that's probably one of the areas that the least is being done, is just see what we have, and how we can address it, and how we can move the state forward. I think those are critical aspects. Do we know of any, how many similar counties that are like Blackhawk County showing 1% growth over the last few years? Well, as I said, the numbers that I have seen, about seventy-two of our ninety-nine counties are losing population. So when you lose population in a city, a county, you have less revenues to focus on. And guess what? They get county bridges, that, you know, all those things still function, and so I think it's just gonna create a heck of a burden for counties and cities and schools across the state when this, if this proposal goes forward, and Representative Powers, pretty well described it, Timmy Brown Powers, that it's not an election year, and they're in the majority. So we'll see what they do.
I guess, Gary or Larry, do you have anything else you'd like to comment on this, or?
I think just one of the things that I'd like to add to the discussion is to let the legislators know, I think, because we were talking about this a little bit last year, that assuming that counties have grown out of this, also assumes that county expenses have remained static over the past, you know, five years, which has not been true. So even if you realize, you know, the 5% growth, which may have been a little optimistic, the expenses that counties have incurred have not remained static. So, and I'd also like to sort of remind folks, because I know that you know this, but just remind folks that there were parts of the backfill that, or parts of the property tax reform bill that weren't backfilled, and those were the multifamily and housing. So, and those hit some communities, like in Blackhawk especially, hard, because you have a larger, you know, sort of student population. So Johnson County and Blackhawk County, I think, were hit particularly hard by some of the areas that weren't backfilled, and at the time, we were told that that was our skin in the game. So we, I guess, I would just sort of ask the legislature to remember that we already have skin in the game, and that the skin in the game was for the state, was the hundred and fifty-two million dollars that they're currently backfilling, and we would encourage them to sort of work with us to help keep that commitment. So thank you.
Frank, I'll just, and I'm gonna tie a couple things together along with that, is, you know, we represent the Urban County Coalition, and those are the urban centers in the state. With the consolidation, and you'll see it on the priorities coming up, where we talked about underfunded or unfunded mandates, counties, again, like Blackhawk County, where, over the course of about twenty years, where you've had numerous consolidations of DHS, basically the ten, eleven, twelve urban counties are where the DHS offices are located. They provide service to the other ninety, or eighty, ninety counties, and so, but there's no reimbursement coming back, other than what they glean from the social service block grant that comes back to, it's about thirty-eight cents of the dollar. So we've had, you know, as we look at this issue, you not only have the case in terms of growth, but you also have the consolidation of services and some of the issues that the urban counties are facing. And if you start backing that state funding out behind the backfill, then you're undercutting their ability to fund those programs. So it's kind of, a lot of issues are tied together, particularly for the urban groups. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. What someone else has other comments on this, and move on.
schools across the state when this, if this proposal goes forward and Representative Powers, pretty well described it, Timmy Brown Powers, that it's not an election year and they're in the majority. So, we'll see what they do.
I guess Gary or Larry, do you have any, anything else you'd like to comment on this year?
I think just one of the things that I'd like to add to the discussion is to let legislators know, I think, 'cause we were talking about this a little bit last year, that assuming that counties have grown out of this also assumes that county expenses have remained static over the past, you know, five years, which has not been true. So, even if you realize, you know, the 5% growth, which may have been a little optimistic, the expenses that counties have incurred have not remained static. So, and I'd also like to sort of remind folks, 'cause I know that you know this, but just remind folks that there were parts of the backfill that, or parts of the property tax reform bill that weren't backfilled, and those were the multifamily and housing. So, and those hit some communities, like in Blackhawk especially, hard because you have a larger, you know, sort of student population. So, Johnson County and Blackhawk County, I think, I think were hit particularly hard by some of the areas that weren't backfilled. And at the time, we were told that that was our skin in the game. So, we, I guess, I would just sort of ask the legislature to remember that we already have skin in the game and that the skin in the game was the, for the state, was the $152 million that they're currently backfilling. And we would encourage them to sort of work with us to help keep that commitment. So, thank you.
Frank, I'll just, and I'm gonna tie a couple of things together. Along with that is, you know, we represent the Urban County Coalition, and those are the urban centers in the state. The, with the consolidation, and you'll see it on the priorities coming up, where we talked about underfunded or unfunded mandates. Counties, again, like Blackhawk County, where, or the course of about twenty years, where you've had numerous consolidations of DHS. Basically, the ten, eleven, twelve urban counties are where the DHS offices are located. They provide service to the other ninety, or eighty, ninety counties. And so, but there's no reimbursement coming back, other than what they glean from the Social Service Block grant that comes back to, it's about thirty-eight cents of the dollar. So, we've had over the, you know, as we look at this issue, you not only have the case in terms of growth, but you also have the consolidation of services and some of the issues that the urban counties are facing. And if you start backing that state funding out behind the backfill, then you're undercutting their ability to fund those programs. So, it's kind of, a lot of issues are tied together, particularly for the urban groups. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. What someone else has on their comments on this and move on next time.
Briefly. Thank you, Mr. Chair and the board supervisors for having us here today. I first want to make an introduction. I am being job shadowed by a local high school student from Valley Lutheran. Owen is here with us, so welcome, Owen.
Owen, could you stand up so not only individuals hear, but the, those watching the program on cable can also?
Hopefully Owen gets a chance to learn, see how the wheels of government turn efficiently and not slowly and deliberately. Let me just say-
One comment for, you can see how all government is intertwined, and decisions that are made at one level impact other governmental entities. Usually, it's down the line.
Yes, we talked about that on the way over. It's a fancy phrase called intergovernmental relations. So, thank you for your leadership. First of all, the commercial property tax cut, which is what it was, ought to be honored. A promise made ought to be a promise kept. And, you know, I respectfully disagree with Representative Salmon that somehow there was a magic trapdoor in the future, that we weren't gonna all of a sudden keep that promise. If that was the case, the law would have been written with a sunset, which would have clearly signaled to everybody that we were gonna come at some point in the future and evaluate the efficacy of the program. That's how honest, forthright legislators signal that a program is not gonna go on in perpetuity. They provide a sunset. Our school districts are dealing with that right now with the statewide penning. It was sunsetted, and they would like it to be extended. So, there's no such language in this law, and it is a promise that should be kept. Really what it's gonna be is a tax increase on property taxpayers all over the state. There's no other way to describe it. And for a party that ran on fiscal responsibility and tax cuts, being able to create all these wonderful opportunities around Iowa, I think that's gonna be a really disingenuous bill if they run to basically do away with the tax cuts for property taxpayers. And oh, by the way, act as if it has no effect on the local governments while they're trying to debate it. So, in the Senate, you should know that this bill and the bill to reform all the pensions in Iowa was literally the last bill out of the last committee meeting, both of these. And thankfully, they, you know, died shortly thereafter. But all of those leaders are back. They signaled their priorities, and I think you should be ready for the debate. Thank you, Frank.
Thank you. Appreciate the input. Move on to the mental health funding. It was a big step a few years ago to move to regional services, and Mr. White has been involved in this. We've seen some legislative trying to address some of the issues, but I guess part that we're concerned about is, strongly oppose any transfer of additional responsibilities from the state to regions without commitment to provide additional resources. You know, the state has brought controls over about fund balances and other areas, but we deal with trying to have a coherent, cohesive twenty-two county memory, members. That has, in some cases, been a challenge, and can let Mr. White address some of those issues. But not all rural counties see the importance of being part of this regional aspect, and they are particularly against any tax increases, property tax increases at the local level. The other part of this is that there's a, gonna be a bill out trying to address child mental health programs, and that is certainly an important issue and something that needs to be addressed. And but we, again, oppose any additional responsibilities for local government without providing additional funding from the state and the state be involved in this process of moving mental health services to those under the age of eighteen. So, this is legislation that, you know, was impacted on the county level. Counties are trying to do the best job they can, provide strong programs to address mental illness, but we need the cooperation with the state in doing this. Mr. White, do you have?
Just a couple of things along that line. Frank, we were at our last meeting for our mental health meeting. We talked about the fund balance and our share of it. And it's, if we've only got 20%, what they wanna take it down to, it puts a burden back on us to keep the monies flowing to the, to our, to pay our bills. And if we, we'd had 30%, we, we're at about 30% right now, aren't we? And that's comfortable for us, but if we get on to 20, it's hard to pay our bills on time. And we would like to pay our bills on time, number one. And along the line of children's mental health programs, I think if we got more programs in place there, along with what our coalition is looking at, we'd solve a lot of the problems earlier, and we wouldn't have the problems later on. We wouldn't be filling our jails and keeping, to keep these young people with mental health issues in line and keeping them out of jail and keeping them in schools and getting them jobs and giving them a good life. You know, there's two or three programs in place right here in the courthouse, mental health. We have Mental Health Court, and we also have the Court for Drugs, and it's, Drug Court is amazing. It costs us about $75,000 out of Brian's funds, back in the back, the county attorney pays that. And if we save one person, you know, from keeping them straight for a period of time or for the rest of their life, I recently walked out with a gentleman that hadn't been sober in I don't know how many years, probably twenty or thirty years, I think, if, was what his statement was every time he'd get up in front. And if he had the monies, we had the monies to do this and keep them, keep people going through this program, I think we'd be more successful in keeping the people out of jail too.
Karen, do you have anything to add to this priority? Karen is one of the representatives to the County Social Services.
Karen Dowell, County Social Services. I would just repeat what Miranda said when she was going through the audit. She said that a healthy fund balance pays bills for three to five months when you have no revenue. With that 20%, that will maybe pay our bills for one month, but then that's it. So, we would hope that we could, or one or two months. But we would hope really that the legislature would look at increasing that to 30% at least. That would help us in our cash flow.
Well, I have had the opportunity to work with the Cedar Valley United Way over the last few years, dealing with mental health issues that are impacting our community. And we have seen, just particularly in the K-12 setting, mental health does exist in the classroom. And one of the areas that we need to step forward, and I say "we," the state, is to make sure that the resources are in place within the schools to provide some of those, like, early intervention practices. So, like a child, I don't know if you've seen the IASIS study in the movie Resilience, it really clearly indicates some of the issues that children face, whether it's gunshots, father that's abusive, you know, all those things have what they call trauma to that child. And then as they grow, that trauma stays with them, and they carry that as an adult and oftentimes, they break the law. So, early intervention is something we really need to focus on. And then some crisis stabilization. I know Blackhawk County and Senator Danielson worked on getting a facility here, even with all the opposition that we faced in Des Moines to getting that. And so, those are critical. The other thing, you know, we did pass a law, but it was almost really, it was language and really nothing else. There was no monies to help establish those six so-called stabilization or crisis centers across the state. And because of that, our county, Bob Lincoln, and the twenty-two counties, they are still struggling. Yeah, sure, they got a plan, but how are you gonna pay for it? And my numbers is, it was about $35 million. So, we put a law, put a bill together without any funding. And so, that's gonna be problematic. And I'll tell you, I've worked with Tom Eacus, Blackhawk Grundy Mental Health, and the struggles that they face day in and day out of trying to keep people out of jail, you know, that's the problem. I've talked to all kinds of people on this issue, and after you explain to them that if we can stop them from going to jail, it saves us money. It's so frustrating that, you know, we're, I think, at one time in the seventies, we were about 2,000 people incarcerated, and our prisons were over 8,000. We all paid for that, taxpayers. And if we could deal with them, you know, mental health isn't something anybody signs up for. You know, it happens, and we have to treat it as a disease. And I'm hopeful that more will be done, particularly funding-wise. That's where we're really falling behind, trying to make a difference on mental health issues.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Maybe just to give you a little lay of the land on what's going on, and then you speculate about whether you're gonna get help in these two areas. So, from ten to sixteen, 2010 to 2016, we were in the middle of some pretty significant changes in mental health in Iowa in terms of our policies. We were the last state in the country to still provide mental health by you folks at the county level using property taxes in 2010. Probably not a good policy. So, we started a transition. We passed bipartisan funding multiple times as a House Republican, Senate Democrats with a Republican governor, and they were constantly vetoed. And to add insult to injury, the governor actually closed two of the largest mental health facilities without asking us if that was the state plan, and were we partners in that as senators and representatives. So, that's ten to sixteen. Basically cuts, and let's ignore the problem, and it'll go away. Sixteen on, we now have what was an acting governor and a new governor, and Bob described it appropriately. These were title bills. You could read the title, and it looked like a subject was being addressed, but when we run title bills in the legislature, there's literally blanks through the rest of the law. And somehow, you're gonna fill it in, I guess, with bureaucrats or others later to kind of make it look like you did something. So, I guess it's a time for the current governor to lead. But my take on it is, the only organizations that are getting new healthcare money are the out-of-state insurance companies that are running Iowa's Medicaid program. And Iowans believe that our mental health system is in a crisis. Most of them do not like the idea that the only new investment in Iowa's healthcare, and mental health being a part of that, is out-of-state insurance companies who seem to only delay and deny Iowan services. So, maybe there's an opportunity for the governor to lead now that she's actually earned the right. The voters have said, "You are our governor." I hope she honors the work that all of us that have tried to do over the last couple of years in a bipartisan way to address this. Bob is exactly right. Here in Blackhawk County, we didn't wait for this help to come. Thankfully, the United Way had a vision to bring us all together, start to talk about ideas that they could help fund and work on these issues. And then Bob has helped lead that coalition, and today, we're focused on children's mental health and crisis intervention for adults. And so, my gut is, we're probably gonna have to do it on our own. I'm hopeful that the governor now, who doesn't have to tie herself to the Branstad administration, can kind of forge her own path and actually invest in Iowa.
Just to update a little bit on the fiscal committee met this fall, and talking with just this weekend, some of the senators that are on that, Senator Volcom and Senator Yocum, they expressed to me that they tried to bring up mental health funding in that meeting, and they didn't get anywhere with it. There was no talk. You know, I think Senator Danielson really hit on something. I think that, you know, it's recognized across the state that the public want us to do something about mental health, and you saw that in the campaigns because both sides talked about it. But the difference was, as Jeff talked about, Senator Danielson talked about title bills, they're really, in my view, moonwalk bills that made it look like we were going forward, but really, we were actually moving backwards, or we were staying right where we were at. And unfortunately, that is too much of what's gone on in the last several years, is that with, they address these bills on critical issues, but they shift money from one program to the other, there's no resources to put in it. And quite frankly, there isn't gonna be any, because the most recent tax adjustments and tax cuts that were put out there, eventually would be something around 400-some million dollars a year. That will, I think this year, the nineteen-year is like 100 million, next year, it's gonna ramp up and close being over 400. So, with what's going on with the farm economy, I think we're gonna see a real valuation of property, because, you know, residential is tied into that formula, and the value of ag lands going down because they're not getting payments. So, we've got some real clouds over the horizon that are gonna be heading our way, and the fact that the legislature, and you're already hearing in public forums across the state from our majority party members, saying the budget's gonna be really tight. Well, don't look for help. Don't look for it. It's not gonna be there, in my, in my view, 'cause the resources aren't there. And it's unfortunate, we talk about what stimulates the economy. Nearly half all the money went to the highest income, 3% of the state, and 25, almost 25% of all residents in Iowa either saw no increase or will see a decrease in the amount of money they're gonna get. So, that's from the Legislative Service Agency, a nonpartisan bureau, put that information out. So, I don't see us having the kind of growth rate we're gonna need to sustain our problems as they grow. And so, I, I'm deeply concerned about it. They don't wanna talk about it in this upcoming year. The only thing that I heard was that they were shopping around, and I don't know if this is gonna work or not for them, was they were gonna increase the state sales tax by one cent. Three eights goes to the I-Will, our natural resources, which is most to water quality, and the other five eights would be spread out with some mental health and more, or more commercial and tax relief. So, it's unfortunate that that one cent would raise almost $450 million. That's almost exactly the amount of the revenue that we gave away. And income tax is the fairest form of tax. It's based on your ability to pay, where sales tax hits everybody in an unequal way. So, I'm very skeptical about what's coming. I do know that the fiscal committee brought out the reserve accounts that are being held across the state on the county level, and I think they were saying there was something like $90 million out there, and they thought that that was excessive and that they had to, had some room and cushions. But when you look at what's going on with water quality on the federal level, especially in small rural districts who can't handle, you know, dealing with water quality in their sewer systems, we already have those problems in our own area, and you start adding this all up, the situation, I think, is gonna be pretty dire in the legislature for finding any kind of revenue for any of these issues.
So, to tag on, the guys hit a lot of it. I just wanna give everybody a brief update, 'cause I'm on the Funding Mental Health Interim Committee, who's met once. And we went through the history that Senator Danielson gave us in three minutes. That took us about five hours. We meet again jointly Friday this week. We meet again jointly Friday this week, and still there's been, been no talk about the funding issue. So that is a concern. And then I, I mean, I'm sure if something great happens on Friday, I will sure call all of you and let you know, but that is a concern. We also have had the Children's Mental Health Interim Committee that has met once, and the big talk there is that that funding will come from the regions. So I don't know how then you can spread the regions. So there's still, you know, and I said on the mental health bill that, that was called at the time, robust in commercials and all across the, and, and we all know that it made, you know, some small little baby steps for maybe some of our sheriffs and some of us, but at the end of the day, it didn't fund anything, and it didn't help. So I think my colleague said it on the head, we're going to have to continue to look within Black Hawk County on how we're going to handle our, our mental health, because it, it doesn't look promising.
And again, it has a ring of unfunded mandate.
Yes.
Representative Solomon, do you have anything you'd like to add to this?
Well, I guess what, what I'd like to say would be that taking on mental health is a, is a very big responsibility, and it's going to require a lot. And there's no way that it's not going to be implemented over a several years' period. This, we passed a legislation last session to put some new structures in place that are designed to deliver mental health services the way people want it, which is in their homes and communities. And that requires some different structures than we've had. We've, we've had to update the structures and the way we do it, because people want to be able to stay in and close to their homes now. And so, but to restructure this, it's just like retooling a factory. It's, it's going to take some time, and you're not going to see it all done and in place next year. It's going to happen in phases, and we have a lot of demands on the budget, and I'm sure that there will, we will need to spread the funding to many other needs we have as well as, as foot towards this need. So I, I think that's something to keep in mind as, as we talk about it. We're talking about a, about big responsibility, and it's not going to happen overnight.
Okay. Thank you.
Just one final thing I want to put out there. It's a, it's a big idea, but big ideas never happen unless we talk about them, and maybe in five or 10 years, the state can get there. But a number of states have, have moved to have legalized recreational marijuana, and they use those massive tax revenues that they take out of the underground economy, which definitely exists in the state, and they use it to fund unmet needs. You could take, you can fund an entire children and adult mental health system through the taxes that would be generated off of recreational marijuana, at the same time reduce our state's prison population, and reduce the county, county and city property tax burden for law enforcement and, and sheriff's deputies. And so it's, it's a big idea, but it's something that's working in many, many other states. It's something that should be appealing to organizations like the Farm Bureau, because it would be a massive property tax reduction. And it's just something that, that's obviously the rest of the country is starting to head that direction. And it's usually happened by ballot initiative, which doesn't rely on, on elected officials making that move, although some states have, have done that through the legislature. And it's eventually the way the country's going to go, and Iowa would be wise to get there sooner than later.
Thank you. We have a guest here that would like to address you. Robinson, come up to the podium and...
Good morning. I wanted, and I'm not sure what the process is, but I have three categories I wanted to talk about, and since the privatization of Medicaid has been mentioned, I can just lump that in with the mental health. But then I also have another one. I happen to be Pastor Mary Robinson. I am Vice Chair of the Black Hawk County Board of Health. I'm also a local pastor, and not Iowa-born, but Iowa-bred and, and raised, and roots in this community in, in Black Hawk County. And as I listen to you, really, I, I was hoping to hear a ray of hope, because as a pastor, the churches, when you can't do, the legislature can't do what needs to be done, when the agencies can't do what needs to be done, then it falls on us. And we are the ones that are seeing the pain. I mean, you're seeing it from a legislative level, you're seeing it from a policy level. We see it from the people that are being affected. With mental health, for instance, I, I could go on and on and on, and you've probably heard some of these stories. But right now, here in Black Hawk County, we have families who are being separated because someone has a mental issue. We have no beds, and they are taken from Waterloo all the way to western Iowa. And then I worked, the last case I worked on, we couldn't even find where the person's spouse was because of HIPAA laws, and we kept calling and saying, "How can he know where his wife is?" And they couldn't tell us anything. We got in touch with the police, and they got in touch with Covenant and said, "What can you tell us?" And finally, they, the police were told, they couldn't be told the hospital in western Iowa, but they were told the city. And so then we got a list of the different hospitals in that city. We called each hospital, and then finally, one hospital said, "Well, we can't tell you whether that person is here." And I said, "Well, here, please, could you ask the person, if they happen to be in your hospital, could you please ask them to call their husband if that's the right person?" And finally, we get a phone call, and it was the right hospital. That shouldn't, that should not happen, but that's the reality of what's happening in mental health. Children are being separated in other parts of the state. Sometimes our families don't have transportation to get there. A part of anybody's process in terms of getting healthier is involvement with their loved ones. And they sometimes don't even have transportation to be able to get. And then that means taking off work, that means all of that. Something has to be done. We have to have the resolve to do it. However it is, whoever decides what fund to take it from, to me, it's a sign of really whether we are a civilized people in terms of how we care for each other. It's an equity issue all across the board, and it, it covers all economic areas, all races. And I just want, I, I appeal to you as legislators, as the county board, this is, is not something we can take five to 10 years to do. This is something that has to be done now. We have to come up with something, because it's affecting our people. And then on the privatization of Medicaid, I don't even know. It's a joke. It really is a joke. We have people who can't get transportation. Then, once they get their treatment, we can't get it approved by something that had already been approved in the past, life-threatening kinds of illnesses and conditions, and they can't get coverage. It is a joke. And, and I don't know if you saw the Des Moines Register series that they did affecting many of the families, and they were talking about Iowans and probably primarily Des Moines is, is happening here. And so it's, it's a profit? Let's face it, the bottom line is profit, it's not people. And so we, we've got to, I urge you, I urge you, from somebody who sees the cases and sees the people and feel their pain, the privatization of Medicaid is not working. Neither is the privatization of our prisons, but that's another, that's, that's another issue. But so I come before you, asking you to find the will, find the resolve, find the finances, find whatever needs to be found. We're brilliant people. We, we can do this, I believe. And then I have one other issue. Do you want me to come back later, or?
No, I understand that you have a time commitment, so you'd like to address it now.
Okay. I don't know, and I brought copies for you just in case, although I don't know how you could have missed it, but just in case, and the, so does somebody want to, well, I can email.
Just give it to Graham.
I have lost a lot of sleep over this report, and it is a report that shows not just Waterloo, but Waterloo and Cedar Falls as being the worst place, not just in Iowa, not just in the county, in the United States, for being the worst place for African-Americans to live. I knew we were in the top 10 a few years ago. I knew that. And now we are number one in the nation. That is incredible to me, and it's very painful. And I remember at a meeting, another meeting, I mentioned to the people at that meeting that I, I looked on the construction as, as there were a lot of building and road reconstruction, and I wasn't seeing African-Americans. And I thought, wow, what's going on here? And I, at first, I thought it was kind of my imagination. And, and then I started paying a lot more attention, and, and I started looking at places where you would go in and you would typically have seen at least one or two of us, and none. And I thought, again, maybe it's my imagination. And then when I got heard about this report, I found out, no, it's not my imagination, that we are number one, that the median income is 46.8% of white income? That's unimaginable. That our unemployment rate is 23.9% when it's 4.4% of whites? Legislators and, and county boards, Board of Supervisors, we're talking about two cities right here in the area that you represent. This ought to be disturbing. It ought to be as disturbing to you as it is to me, I would hope. The home ownership rate is only 32%, 32.8%, we're 73.2% for whites? I, I just, I, I, I'm, I'm, I know we can do better. I know we can do better. And I'm wondering, how are we monitoring what we're doing? What, what standards do we have in place? Do we, do we have a plan to make sure that all who live in this county and live in our state and live here in Waterloo and Cedar Falls? What standards are we using to make sure that we don't get these kinds of numbers? We pay taxes too. You know, we help move the economy as well. And I know that sometimes people like to make a distinction between Waterloo and Cedar Falls, but hey, guess what? In this report, we're lumped together. And what does that tell us? I like what you said about Frank, about intergovernmental relations, because we are all connected. And so it's not just a city, it's not just a county, but it's a state. And I wanted to bring your attention to that, if you didn't already know it, which I hope that you do. But it needs to be addressed. Number one in the nation, that hurts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you. It's kind of the reality that's presented to us. It's not, it's not the numbers, but it's what happens in life. To kind of give you...
Mephaes, I answer him. Go ahead.
Quote, Mephaes is, according to the microphone, I just want to mention that the Crisis Stabilization Center, that instrumental in getting in place, you know, is now going to be moving to subacute services. We hope to have that in place by the beginning of the year, and then working on if we can get the rules done on access centers that will help particularly law enforcement with individuals in the right locations rather than putting them in jail. So that whole process, and one of the things with child mental health, addressing those is that every detention center in the state of Iowa will have some benefit from that. We've been trying to address it over the years with, with our unique facility that we have. Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
I think my, my comment is more with the legislators. I feel like there's something systematic that's going on that's a problem. And I know I'm preaching to the choir, but in regards to mental health, you can't say you'll cut taxes and then provide resources for mental health. It doesn't go. So the, the problem actually lies on the education of people. I think that people are voting on things that perhaps they can relate to, they can connect to. So decreasing taxes means that there's more money in my pocket. And I think it's the responsibility of the legislators to find strategic ways in reeducating, almost going back at the grassroots level, knocking on doors, because our other political party, those are some of the things that they're doing that has been strategic and that has worked. And I, I find that with the Democratic Party, especially as it relates to public health, it's at a higher level of thinking, and people are not connecting. What are some of the personal stories that legislators can share in which people can identify themselves? So I think that's really one of the issues that's happening as, as a community. People are not understanding the problem. They understand that decreasing income tax will provide more funding in, in their homes, but they're not understanding what we can do as a community with taxes. So I, so I would encourage you all to think about your discourse and how you can reframe it so that people can connect with. And in emphasizing what Reverend Mary just stated, we are ranked 92 in terms of social and economic as a county out of the 99 counties. One of the key initiatives the, the Health Department is trying to push is how to be a community health strategist as it relates to equity issues, equity in regards to education, in regards to health, in regards to employment. And, and I really would encourage you all to take that, that kind of strategic model as you all campaign, as you all communicate with, with people, because that, that is what will get people to understand. And, and we're trying as a community, but the disparities here are incredible at the, at the county level. The communities are still segregated. Most, most underprivileged homes lack the necessary... Most, most underprivileged homes lack the necessary resources to actually elevate them and whereby they can be self-sufficient. And that has been historical and systematic in, in terms of racial injustice. I would, I would, I would encourage more of that discourse, but that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we're asking you to spend a lot of time here, but we do have some additional issues that, and when we look at the, again, going back to our unfunded mandates, you know, the county is responsible for covering a lot of expenses for state offices. When you look at this courthouse here, we have those responsibilities, but you know, at least fifty percent is occupied by the state. Look at DHS, you know, we're responsible for many of their operating costs on an annual basis. So, you know, we look at not only complain about these things, but we have a solution that if more of the money's portion was put back into maintaining the courthouse and security, you know, from the fine collections and from the cost that people have to pay for court costs, they could help to relieve these unfunded mandates. And, you know, along with one of those things is our requirement to publish in this county in three newspapers. And if we could cut that down to one, I know there's always concerns about that, but that's something that we're pushing for.
How are those received? I guess I'd like to, from a state level, I said, these have been on our list for quite some time as you all recognize them and see them too. But I, I said, they seem, they say, we're looking at ways to relieve some of the pressure on, on a county. And they're open to those types of things. That, how much discussion is held on these? Or how much do they take these seriously, I guess, in your positions?
I think that's the answer.
Yeah, I bet you there's very little.
Nothing is going on.
No. They stopped listening, I think. Some years ago, we went through this problem. And we went around the state. I know a group of senators went into different districts where the majority party had control and talked to county board, local supervisors of, of the school systems, city government. And we found out that they're very frustrated also. And I, I don't think that there's much attention paid to these issues. Senator Danielson hit on it with the title bill thing. You know, addressing the African-American situation here in Blackhawk County, one of the most important things we can do is educate minority groups on the opportunities that are available for careers. But because you're living in poverty, you don't have the resources to be able to get that kind of skill upgrading to access those type of opportunities. So here we go in the legislature, realizing that that's what, what the problem is. We, I served on with Mayor Hart and others in the legislature, other legislators on the Future Ready Task Force. And we had people come together and address and talk about these very issues. And it was talked about in all the campaigns, about how important it was. But yet, the legislature didn't put any resources behind. And the number one recommendation that came from the regions, community colleges, K through twelve, business community, I go down the list of all the demographics that were represented on that, was to have a last dollar scholarship available for low-income individuals to help them make, fill the gap from Pell Grants and whatever, so they could get that kind of skill upgrading. And they never put any dollars in it. So, you know, we're very frustrated that we hear this continually and legislators here across the state, but their response is continually, we have a tight budget, you know, you guys make sense, but we just don't have the resources, when they created the situation where we don't have the resources.
So to the gentle lady's question, that is a good one. And you have three issues here where efficiency and savings could be had if the costs were not hidden. But quite frankly, since two thousand and ten, nearly every initiative coming from the state legislature across all areas of policy, this is shared governance that we're talking about, but it doesn't matter, education, healthcare, job creation, every action, not their words, every action they have taken has shifted costs to the other partner. And so, you know, the idea that this will be well-received as a wonderful partnership of shared costs, and can we do it better? None of the actions since two thousand and ten have actually done that. In fact, quite the opposite. Every policy choice has shifted the cost and the responsibility to somebody else. And the same crowd is in control of you.
Thank you. It just seems like there's some of these issues that would be so easy to work with and through. And yeah, that unwillingness to do it just creates.
Well, think about it. The number one issue on your list is going to be another cost shift to you, not reducing the burden.
Well, it's unfortunate that we look at our list and just put on three priorities when there are so many other things that need to be accomplished. But we've kind of, as you see, that's that list that we hope to focus on more, so.
There's a statutory committee of government efficiency that was created after the worst recession since the Great Depression, after George Bush's final term in office as president. We created a committee in Iowa to hopefully avoid that kind of crisis planning. Those committees have all but stopped meeting. And they're statutory even. So apparently, there's a report being submitted that says we thought we were going to meet and never really did. And they think that satisfies the statutory requirement, so.
Susan, could you give us a dollar figure that we've come up with? With the unfunded mandates in this category that we addressed? And certainly, having to store state government, our state documents, you know, we have to have buildings that we store these documents in also. I don't know if you recall, but it was a significant amount of money that the county puts forward on an annual basis.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, Frank, I don't have that number handy.
Seems to me that it's in excess of four hundred thousand.
I think that would be.
I know the publication costs along with the seventy thousand to do in the three newspapers. We talked about that recently. And I said another issue on, on the sideline of that is, is an efficiency issue. It requires us to track three newspapers and make sure that they have published things that we're requiring. If not, that creates a different timeline for us or a problem for us from a publishing standpoint. And, and so three even complicates it more. But in today's environment, as you know, with website information and everything posted on that, that one just seems like almost a ridiculous one. That is some, a relief that could be given to the county and certainly is not, and doesn't even require the state's assistance in that or funding, so.
Yes, I'd like to, Gary Grant, I'm one of the other lobbyists for the Urban County Coalition. I'd like to, some of you may not know of another more recently unfunded mandate placed on us by this, us, I say regions, by the state. In September, DHS informed regional CEOs that from now on, regions were going to be asked to pay something called the Delta on Medicaid expenses. And what this means is, is that now DHS, who sets the reimbursement rates that the managed care companies use, will now be, is, is now free to set those, those reimbursement rates without regard to costs. And the effect that this is going to have is that while DHS cannot require regions to pay this Delta, if, if DHS sets a cost that is, or reimbursement rate that is below the cost of providing the services, regions will effectively be placed in a position where if they don't cover the Delta, this Delta, the, the service won't be provided. So, and we do know of one service that DHS has done this already. It's called the Assertive Community Treatment Teams that are, 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 one of the, the core services. That they're, DHS currently sets the reimbursement rate based on a five-day rate, and these are a seven-day-a-week service. So regions, I can tell you, I don't know what, what Bob's region is supplementing, but I can tell you the East Central Region, just south, what's that? Okay, so this, this region we're in right now, they supplement the ACT teams three hundred thousand dollars, because if they didn't, they wouldn't have a provider. The East Central Region just south of us is supplementing those to the tune of about nine hundred thousand a year, I think. So this is a very real unfunded mandate. So, you know, I, I'm not, I'm not here to tell, to talk about sort of whether or not managed care is a good thing or a bad thing, but I'm telling you that when you hear savings realized by managed care, realize that in, in eastern Iowa, in these two regions, one point two million dollars of the savings, roughly, ballpark, is coming directly at the expense of property taxes. So that's a major cost shift in the, in the area of mental health, and one that we will be doing our level best to address this, this session. Because this is, like I said, it is not legal for DHS to mandate that regions cover this cost, and they're not mandating that we do it, but if we don't do it, we don't have the service. That, by the way, we're required to provide, by law, to provide. So that's a, that's an interesting catch twenty-two. I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Can you put a list together of the unfunded mandates and give them to us?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Absolutely do that. And, and I'll tell you, the, the resistance that we have run into before, and this is bipartisan resistance, so it's not, and this is not a, an ideological problem, but these cost shifts represent real money. I think the last fiscal note that we got when we tried to address this, simply the, the issue of housing, Department of Human Services offices, that statewide, that could have a budget impact of about four point two million dollars, ballpark. And the problem is, is that if we don't pay for that, the state has to. And the state is, has been either unwilling or unable to come up with the additional money to, to, to fund its own operations. So it's shifted those costs to local government. So, and, but by the way, this is a, this is not a recent development. What, 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 what this represents is sort of a, a very old piece of code that required counties to provide space normally in the courthouse. And this goes back to when there were ninety-nine sort of like DHS county offices. So when you were housing a social worker, you know, and, and a couple of filing cabinets and a phone in, in your county courthouse, this wasn't as big of a deal as it is now with ten, I think it's, I think it's ten DHS regional centers that are all located in sort of the largest population, the largest population centers. So we're talking about, we get reimbursed thirty-eight and a half cents on every dollar for what counties provide. So when you, when, when you think about it, this is, you know, sixty, you know, sixty, sixty-one and a half cents out of every dollar that we spend on rent for Department of Human Services. And this is, the regional office here is, is fairly sizable, like it is, like there is also one down in Cedar Rapids. And I know that the one down in Cedar Rapids, that, 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 you know, and this, this is the only one I can remember, they rent three floors of a downtown office building, and the rent alone costs three hundred thousand dollars. So a statewide impact of four point two million dollars is pretty easy to get to when you start talking about, you know, those kind of numbers. So, thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else have comment on this issue? Next item is the. Is the EMS services is an issue in rural areas in the state of Iowa? Some of the funding that proposed is through the taxes that the, that's levied at the, lost, help me out. Township level, thank you. And much of that is going to provide firefighter services, but not to emergency medical services. So there is a need to try to address this. I, you know, think we have a robust system here in Blackhawk County, but there are many times when particularly the rural departments do not have staffing that allows them to provide the needed medical service when someone's life is at risk.
Thank you, Frank. This is a crisis. There are literally places in Iowa where you do not get any, even after a second or third dispatch. So I think the simplest policy and political solution to this is to modernize the mission of the townships. Today, they have three duties: fire protection, fence disputes, and pioneer cemeteries, maintenance and upkeep and preservation. Quite frankly, when it comes to fence disputes or the pioneer cemeteries, if those issues develop any complexity at all, you all become involved with your staff and end up solving it anyways. So by default, that policy has migrated generally to Board of Supervisors because you've got the resources and the personnel to help with. So effectively, while that's still a part of their duties, it's not really how it actually takes place when those policies pop up. So in my view, repurpose and modernize the mission of the townships, direct them to provide both EMS and fire since they're integrated, and allow for those townships to start to create more regional and robust partnerships. Many of these calls cross borders anyways. And Frank, you know as well as anybody, since you've spent a lifetime professionally in this area, we're still not without gaps in the urban areas of Blackhawk County. For example, in Cedar Falls, the ambulance is provided by a hospital who by definition has a larger customer and responsibility base. So it is regularly occurring today where your frontline ambulance in Cedar Falls, which looks like a city asset, is actually going to Parkersburg and New Hartford and Dyke, therefore not available. And so some of these availability and capacity issues are even affecting what looks like a robust urban environment with two hospitals and municipalities and what appears to be plenty of resources. So my view is if we can get a coalition of the willing in the capital, it would have to be bipartisan, it would have to address the urban versus rural conflicts that come up. But to me, the simplest way is let's modernize the townships. I've gone as far as to say, let's eliminate them. But for some reason, people want those other four thousand layers of government in Iowa. So if you can't eliminate them because of the politics of it, let's modernize their mission. When I did the research a few years ago, they are able to levy total statewide about twenty-some million dollars in property taxes. At the time, we asked what their reserves were, and it was about twenty-five million total statewide. You could solve a lot of the EMS reimbursement, ability to hire paramedics, to staff the services. You could solve a lot of these gap issues around the state just by changing that mission and the purposes of those levies. You'd never have to take a dime from anybody else or shift it from another part of the budget. So I'm going to continue to argue for that, Frank. I think it's, as I said, the politically and policy feasible way to go with the less, least amount of friction given people's, you know, sort of territorial and parochial concerns. So I'm going to continue to do that. I think there's actually some, some of my Republican friends who are starting to warm up to it.
There has even been problems with filling those positions during elections. So you got a lot of counties that are sitting out there where they're half-full or so.
Right. The Board of Supervisors have to appoint.
Don't give up on that argument of eliminating off.
Well, well, then join me in the cab during that discussion.
Absolutely.
There wasn't even too long ago where those budgets were turned in basically on Barnack, right? Until he said there actually has to be a reporting requirement to the auditors a few years ago. The sophistication for which even the activities that they were doing was, you know, very hard to verify. But nevertheless, there is some value to their, their ability to act. But nevertheless, there is some value to their, their ability to actually levy and commit resources to a cause. And in my view, their mission ought to be modernized.
Yeah.
To focus on EMS and fire services. And let the county attorneys and the accountants deal with fence disputes and pioneer cemeteries.
Anyone else wish to address this?
Yeah, I literally represented Sam in here. I heard quite a bit from this, from my people about this issue. As they struggle to be able to respond to calls and, you know, get volunteers and, and so forth. And there are, there are mechanisms whereby the county can assume the responsibilities of, of the EMS. There, there could be created an immediate EMS district and there's some provisions for, uh, uh, income tax, surtax, and they're raising a property tax to provide for it. And I'm not sure that all the townships have availed themselves of that opportunity to be able to do that. It's already currently in law in this area. I think probably, I think some of them have, but the county can also come in with additional, take responsibility and have an additional property tax increase to cover it. And I'm not sure that, that it would be enough to cover it. That's, that's, that's a concern. So this is, this is definitely something that I've worked on since I've been in the legislature and still, I think part of the prob, part of the problem is when legislators look at making EMS an essential service, they feel like they're looking into a black hole. They don't know what the cost of that's going to be. And so I think that's part of what makes it difficult to move forward. I know that one of the counties in north central Iowa has gone to requiring it's an essential service. And so their experience is definitely something to watch, see how that works for them as, as they go forward with it. So I thought you had a good thoughts there, Senator Danielson, on looking at the mission of the trust township. And, you know, maybe there needs to be some adjustments made there. Anyway, putting responsibilities where there's more resources. So.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is whether there's talk or not about the Iowa public employees retirement system, whether there's going to be any proposed changes in that. Seems to be a well-funded retirement system, and I think most people would not change anything.
I heard mixed messages. Some people are saying that we need to change it. Others are saying it's pretty stable, and I think the, the data points out that we do have one of the best run. I do know that greater than partnership and one of their legislative agendas was to revamp it. So we're, I've been hearing from Republicans on this issue on both sides. So I think it remains to be seen.
Yeah, and I heard that the new chair of the state government committee made a comment that he would not take up any bill dealing with this. But the process allows that bill to flow through any other committee. So traditionally, that would probably go through state government, but they could, I mean, we all know, we've seen how, how it kind of could be hung on a tree like an ornament, you know, and there it is. And so I think people need to pay attention and make sure, reach out to their legislator and say, what the heck's going on? What are you going to do?
That's what we're doing, Bob.
Yeah. That's what we're asking right now.
Well, I think Senator Danielson opened with that. Remember the two bills in the Senate, the last two bills? This was one of them.
And recent property taxes.
Right. So it's there and it was a topic at the Senate. It wasn't in the House, but that doesn't mean that senators won't pass it over.
So let me just say is my own policy choice is that people that are in elected office today ought to be opening up economic opportunity and increasing economic security for those who have earned, and that's retirements and pensions. And there is no greater tool in Iowa for ensuring economic security for people who dedicated their lives to public service than hypers. You can go to the teaching profession, you can go to government services and you name it. Those folks have rightfully earned that economic security. There are those who run for elected office today who don't seem to be concerned about that economic security for those who have earned it. I don't know how they get there, but they're there. On the evidence, as chair of this committee, basically from two thousand and ten on until sixteen, when I became the chair, all of the metrics of hypers relative to their peers could be described as substandard. In fact, probably the most important one, what was the fund soundness over time? That is, if you amortized it, what would you pay it off? I received a report that said infinity. They hadn't even tried to calculate how many years it would take to pay off the obligations. Within a few short years, we increased the lifetime tables, we increased the employee contributions, we increased, increased the employer contributions, we lowered our expectations for market return. Oh, by the way, all the things that you would do if you wanted to fix social security and make it more sound for the future. We did it. There was zero negative articles about all of those things we passed in an area of policy that people have a reason to have strong feelings about. And today now, hypers relative to its peers, as colleagues have said here, measures up very well and is sound, given the evidence. But I, I believe that my Senate Republican friends see this as their sacred duty to somehow fix hypers. I said before, the two bills that they tried to run at the end of last year was a property tax increase by not reimbursing the promise of the commercial property tax credit and to fundamentally alter the relationship of hypers with its recipient, making it less secure. And so I think they're going to come back again regardless of what the House leadership says. I believe their, the Senate Republicans are going to create a negotiation conflict at the end of the session over these two issues. It will be a live round until literally the last bill we vote on.
And our fund grew by, I believe, one hundred and thirty-five million last year above the payout. So, you know, in two thousand and eight, with the Bush recession, those funds took a real hit in value, and it has been growing back and, and it's, it's a pretty sound system. The best thing, the worst thing you could do is start pulling young, the new hires out and expect that fund to maintain its stability. And if it does, and as Jeff said, the financial security is important, and a retiree that doesn't have that and loses everything, where do they get their sustainability from government? Welfare? So if we don't do it now, there's a strong possibility we will be paying for it later. So shame on them for trying to mess with something that's also a huge recruitment tool for talent, you know, in state government and county and city government.
Thank you. Kind of move on to water quality. Here in Blackhawk County, we're part of three watershed initiatives. And I know from serving on, on one of those or two of those that we're only scratching the surface on what the real needs are. In some cases, the watersheds have got some federal grants to work on projects. But if you were serious about it, addressing this, you wouldn't be looking at millions of dollars, billions of dollars to try to address this in the future. It's not only addresses how we can reduce the impact of flooding, which we see more frequently, it also has to do with reducing the, or increasing the water qualities. You know, particularly, we dump a lot of nitrates into the Mississippi River that flows downstream and we're a big contributor to what takes place down in New Orleans. It's a huge issue and the way we're looking at funding it now will, will not address the needs. And again, that needs to be looked at in a shared services and the private sector cannot be left out of it.
Well, I know that I will has been talked about. I think in twenty-ten it was voted by the voters to support it. And so currently, that part of the process now is just waiting on the legislative body to act on it. I have heard some concerns about this. If it goes through and creates that penny goes to the water, land and legacy component, that who would manage those dollars? And I have heard suggestion that it's Farm Bureau is one of those. And that would be very problematic for me to see that happen. But we'll see. I think there is some support to pass that, so we'll see what happens.
I'd just add, so I serve on the middle Cedar River Watershed Management Authority, and we are the, the one that was fortunate to have this large federal grant that includes some infrastructure improvements, but most of those are in Benton County because the, because of the grant requirements. But what it does include for all the watershed is, is plans being developed and stuff. And so that's a significant portion of the work right there. But it's not going to do any good if we don't match those plans that are being developed for things like Blackhawk Creek, which is a two hundred thousand acre watershed, if, if we don't eventually have some state funds to, to match some local funds to implement those. And so the work's being done to develop what we need to do, but we don't want those just sit on the shelf and, and sit idly by.
So I think two challenges there are is do you actually have the adequate resources to move the needle? I don't think that's going to change, by the way. Yes, you probably know. And you do have some problems with the agricultural department itself in terms of some controversy around their ability to safeguard funds. They've had two or three high-profile cases of embezzlement. So I don't think the legislature is going to be real excited about making them the fiduciary agent for any of these. And then I think probably more likely, you're going to see a nonprofit all of a sudden become the lead agency because almost all of the things we passed in the last couple of years have gone through agencies like the soybean association as both the investor and the measure of the projects, which is completely silly when it comes to having a firewall between those two functions. My advice is you're probably going to see more of that. And I hadn't heard the Farm Bureau all of a sudden wanting government money to function, but apparently maybe their ideological philosophy has changed and somebody set four hundred million in front of them. And then, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, if I may, I'm going to have to leave. I've got an eleven-thirty, and I also don't want to get called to the principal's office because my job shadow student was late to get to that.
Well, we're concerned about student, but your welfare is not our concern.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeff. Continuing on.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yes. Thank you.
Next item we have is the opioid epidemic. And a star witness left, I see, Brian.
Yep.
So I'd maybe ask Gary to address some of these issues on the opioid. And then one of the issues we have on here is that we'd like to encourage the legislature to look at adequately funding drug court. Again, it's unfunded mandate, it's been pushed down to the county level. DHS, or not DHS, but the first judicial district, you know, their, their funds keep getting funded on an annual basis. I see again this year, they're going to stay with status quo funding and reality of that means it reduces services. So it is a problem in the state of Iowa, and we'd like to find a way to work with state legislature and local government to address it.
Yes, we want to, we want to thank you for your efforts last year in helping to pass some improvements to the prescription monitoring program because that, I think that is an important sort of step in addressing the opioid crisis. But as Frank mentioned, there are other things that we know work that, and we understand that funding is limited, but drug courts and things like that, that what we don't want to see is the legislature consider its work to be done on this. Like we don't want the legislature to consider its work done on water quality. I think some, some important steps have been made, but the job isn't finished. So we encourage you guys to continue to look at this and help us find ways. And, and I think we've been pretty clear in the urban county coalition, and I think, you know, your supervisors have been pretty clear that we, we understand that there are a number of these efforts from, you know, mental health to the opioid crisis to unfunded mandates where we will, we are happy to act as a partner, but we are not at all interested in sort of having additional responsibilities sort of passed down to us. And let me sort of reiterate this, that in the context of the discussion that we're having now on the backfill, I can say as sort of the, as the lobbyist up there for the urban county coalition, I will view skeptically any commitment made by the state, considering that there, there, we, we now understand that many legislators believe that the backfill wasn't a permanent commitment. Should additional funding come through on, say, mental health or children's mental health, we will have no reason to expect that that will be a permanent commitment. So we encourage you guys to, to keep, to keep looking at ways to sort of improve the programs that you've taken some important first steps on. Thank you.
Let's see, I'm involved with the Crush Coalition, and our leader, Jackie Presslin, has done really, really amazing work in the community. One area that she always struggles with is having access to enough Narcan and, and naloxone, in, which are the, the drugs, as you know, that, that stop somebody from having an overdose. She's been able to do countless trainings with all sorts of entities all throughout our community, but the ability to do those is often jeopardized and a lot of her time is spent trying to maintain a supply of those products, so she has to do a really kind of hodgepodge from here and there. And it'd be really great to have continued state support, not just a, not just a one year injection of something.
And I've worked with Jackie, she is phenomenal. We're looking to have her in this community, but she definitely needs more resources and resources at the state level, and we definitely aren't done with an opioid bill, I would hope. It's something that Chuck Eisenhower and I have, have worked on for four years. They didn't listen to us for the first two years, and now it's, it's got the ear of most people because people are actually dying now. So it's, hopefully that's something that we can continue to work on and get a stronger. The other thing that Jackie has been, been really dealing with is, so it is cheaper to get, if I can draw the IV, but that is not on the code for EMS to fall. So, so we've got that kind of, because the PIN is more expensive, which we can give out to people, but to get that supply, make sure that all of our rural areas have that supply, it's more expensive and the rural areas can't afford to buy that, obviously. We just talked about. We just talked about that. So trying to find an avenue where we can get the treatment to those rural areas and to those family members at a lower cost as well. So I think that's one of the things that we're tasked with this session as well.
Thank you. Any other comments? Next item is tax credits, and we see this as a major tool in helping rebuild communities. And, you know, the elimination of some of these, I think, could be devastating in particularly communities that we have here in Blackhawk County.
And I think this is something, I mean, so our historic tax, our endowment tax, all those are important tax credits, right? But we have lists and lists and lists of tax credits. So really, what we've talked about for how many years above in the House, that we're going to sit down and prioritize that, what we've, what we've done is we've set up these committees. Well, that means we're not going to do anything. If we set up an interim committee to look at that, that means nothing's happening. And that's what we've done for the four years that I've been down there. And we have yet to really sit down and prioritize that list and make it working so that the good taxes are still in place, so that we are seeing positive things, and that some of those other taxes just need to go away, because the pages are just, so we have a priority problem in Iowa. I have said for the last few years, and we really need to look at, yes, the historic tax. These taxes are important taxes, but what are some of the tax credits that are not important? And we've kicked that can down the road, and I don't know that we're getting anywhere with it this segment. We will be talking about, I'm sure, again. But if you hear that we're going to set up a committee, that means we're not going to do anything.
Okay, thank you. Tax increment financing on his TIF is, you know, in many cases is an extremely valuable tool. And if there is any thought about making any changes in that, we just ask that you look at the more active part of the counties being part of that, because it does impact our budget when areas are placed in TIF that those increases in values are no longer available for us to tax. And in many cases, it takes 20 years or plus, or they never come back on the roles that where they're paying property taxes to the county and schools.
School, too.
I think what I saw early on in the process was that there were some things that were being done with the TIF that may have fit into category of abusing the system. And so the legislature stepped in and, of course, added more regulations for cities and counties dealing with TIFs. But I, I don't know. We'll see what happens. It can be just like anything else down there. I've seen the benefits to TIF, particularly in my district, has been pretty significant in store growth. Shellrock, I don't know if you've been up there a while, but they, they've done some pretty, pretty unique things up there, too. So you're seeing developments take place in housing. So the rural areas, I think, would be a strong tool for them to try and build their communities back up.
Okay, thank you. We have this item on here, and we've been a big proponent of. The next one is Medicare reimbursement for county-owned facilities. You know, we get reimbursed at 80%, and, you know, we look at our facility at Country View, that it would have, in more realistic, we would have had to supplement that facility by about $3 million a year. You know, we're currently looking at certainly options for that, but Dubuque County still has a county-owned facility, and if there's any potential that this could be considered in the future of having a higher rate for government-owned facilities that are operating, there's certainly a need for it.
I think even having the same rate that the state allows themselves for their own facilities would be, would go a long way.
Totally agree.
Thank you. I don't mean to go over some of these, but we've asked you to be here a significant amount of time. We're not going to address the DCAT, that is some legislation that was taken care of last year, I believe. So if you've got any questions on that, we can address it. But the next item is REIT, and it's been dramatically underfunded for many years. Commitment is, you know, at $20 million, but it never reaches that funding level. So it means a lot for our conservation department, which means quality of life issues here in Blackhawk County. The trail funding, you know, we're, we looked at this more statewide trails rather than just city or county trails. I think we could make improvements. We have significant issues here in Blackhawk County maintaining trails. You know, in the past, we've had to put in two bridges across Cedar River, and we currently are looking at mechanisms of funding the Wolf Creek Bridge. And we have a lot of other needs. If we look at Cedar Valley Nature Trail, matches up to going Cedar Rapids and could go beyond. There's a significant portion of that that is not hard surface. So there are many needs to address the trail funding, and we think that it's more than just local government's responsibility. And I know I'm talking to a choir group.
The people that have been using the trail have really worked hard on that Wolf Creek Bridge thing, and I think that we finally have the resources with grants and the amount of money that was raised to get that fixed. But certainly, there are a lot of other bridges out there, and I got to commend our new director, Blackhawk County Director. He's really worked hard on working with the groups and viewing the trail system as a park. And it's important to the quality of life and recruitment of talent to our communities. So I know some people view it as something that, you know, isn't that important, but it also, when you look at healthcare costs, new studies are out showing that communities that have parks, that do have the ability for people to exercise, water trails, you know, hiking, biking, those kind of things, they do have lower healthcare costs. And healthcare costs are a real problem. And, you know, it's baby boomer's age, and you see what's happening with the Medicaid system. The state underfunded it last year. We didn't know how much it was going to be underfunded. We were saying it was probably going to be something like 50 million for Medicaid. Turned out it was 65 million. So one of the first things we're going to have to do is go back and backfill that by law. So we'll have to come up with 65 million, and that would be a lot of the carryover that came from last year. So there are resources there. But those kind of things are very important. I know there are naysayers in our community that think that this is fluff, and that if we don't do it, it'll relieve taxpayers, but I think it'll actually have the opposite effect, because I sit on the Institute of Decision Making and Economic Development Boards, and to the person all across the state, they have said one thing: We are losing good quality jobs. 10% more companies from last year are saying they're not looking to expand or looking to take work somewheres else because they have a talent shortage. And we need to really make sure that we have the quality type of communities that people want to live in to fulfill those roles.
I remember I attended a presentation years ago over at the Art Center, and there's a small county in, right on the border of southern Iowa. Fastest growing county in the state of Iowa was two things: Recreation and livestock was their growth. In other words, they were saying that's, this group that's coming up now, they want recreation, whether it be boating, hiking, whatever. Those two things were the number one.
Thank you. Unless someone else has other comments on it. Move into county bonding, and for whatever reason, there's a disparity between what county, the amount that counties can bond for and what cities can bond for. And Susan, I'm sure, can address this far better than I can, but there's a disparity there. Cities can bond for up to $5 million for these purposes, and the counties, and I think, Susan, what's the amount for that?
Larry, do you know?
Yeah, I think just a short version, cities and counties are treated differently. And so the counties are basically limited population and valuation to a certain dollar amount in terms of bonding, or they have to look at referendum. Cities have a lot more tools, and particularly, as I talked earlier, in terms of economic development, some of the other things, having some of those additional tools that allow you to issue bonds for projects or whatever, most of the time, it's actually, they don't need to bond for a full project. They were able to set aside funds initially, it would just be, give the bond, the difference between reserves and the actual project cost. Under Iowa law, counties can't do that. They have to bond for the whole project as opposed to, you know, that balance. So really, what's being asked is just the same to the counties, the same to cities in terms of bonding, as well.
Thank you. One of the other issues is the emergency management funding. Now, there's some concern that federal government won't be pushing these dollars down to the state. I just want to make sure if we receive those, that 80% of it goes to local-level needs rather than a large percentage going to the state. Along those lines, E-911, it was increased to 60% from 47% that the funds on cell phones, the dollar that is charged, provide services at the PSAT. We're struggling here in Blackhawk County to have enough funds to maintain the essential equipment that is necessary to operate the consolidated dispatch. And again, it's, the state is looking at building their own radio system, and if they look at those funds that are generated locally to pay for state projects, you know, quite truthfully, that, that 60% should be at a much higher level. That comes back to the county. But it'll be, like the other unfunded mandates, it'll be forced into local government paying for those costs, because E-911 cannot cover those costs. We're currently looking at an upgrade to the system that could cost up to $3 million in our local E-911. Revenues would probably only allow them to pay a portion of that $3 million. So that would push the cost back either to county levying a tax for that, or municipalities levying a tax for that. So it's something that benefits everybody that uses the phone to call any E-911 emergencies, but much of the, some, a large portion of the funds goes to state to operate their system. So it puts the burden back on to local government to cover those costs. I'm sure you have solutions.
More funding.
The other issue, and Grant certainly can, Peter can certainly address this, but you've gone from 40 days for, for the voting cycle to early voting, and to do this to, now it's dropped 29 days, and it's put a lot of pressure on the local election office in the past that it go back to the 40 days. And Grant want to address this?
Yep. This is the issue you've been looking for. It's not only the last one on the list, but it will not cost the E-911 penny to pass this. You're aware of the bill that this was a part of. It was a pretty comprehensive bill about calling itself election reform. In some ways, it looked a lot like voter suppression, while other people thought that it was for the prevention of voter fraud. But there really wasn't much voter fraud that they were identifying that actually occurred that was being addressed. But regardless of whether there was or is voter fraud going on, this issue of how long you can vote absentee doesn't seem to be in that mix. And so it just, I don't see any other reason for shortening the period of voting than to make it harder for people to vote, and I don't see the purpose of that. So I realize changing all the aspects of that law would be very difficult, but it seems from a fairness point of view, this is one part that could be easily changed.
So do you think you'll be moving some legislation forward to do that as an association or group?
Yes, this is in our State Association of Counties, most legislative branches.
Because of the compressed time, did either counties or our county, did you have to hire additional people to cover that compression? Or how did that work out?
Yeah, we, you know, tried to make some estimates of how much extra help we would need for the general election last fall, because we always hire extra clerical help for the big elections. And we, we found that we had underestimated, and we had to hire more. You know, people for years have been voting early and are used to a certain schedule, and then when they find that they, they can't vote as early as they thought they could, then it's compressed, especially at the outset of that period. There was, it was, it was a lot of work, and we had to hire on more help.
So not only won't, won't cost us any money, it could actually save money across the state.
True.
Right. Well, I think it was just an overall attempt to restrict the amount of opportunities for voting. I mean, that's the reality of it. We saw some of those examples. I know that there's a race out in eastern Iowa, like the Decor that still is in the legal process, and it just seems like the whole process has just really caused some issues for voters in, in the state. So hopefully, something can be done to address that, and I appreciate your comments, because the word "it's not going to cost the state" is one that should be shared, and people understand, and we should move it back to what it was.
Thanks.
And wrapping up, if you have any questions, our lobbyists are down there 24 hours a day for your convenience.
Screw it.
And we only have one left now, so you can see how that works. But most importantly, contact, when you see issues that impact cities and county government, contact individuals that have the best knowledge about that. And for the county, that's our elected offices and our department heads has had the knowledge of what the impact is when you're making legislation. The other thing, when you're down there with legislatures, I guess I would ask, is there any of them that do not live in a city or a county? No. So what your decision-making is does impact them locally when they go back home and they have to pay their taxes.
I would just say, Frank, that the thought process of some is one that you probably would shake your head at, so, just share.
But thank you very much. Thank you, Representative Solomon, for joining us on the phone. And Timmy and Bill, thank you for being here. Larry, thanks for being here. We appreciate it.
And I want to thank the legislators, because they're incredibly responsive to us. There are a ton of them responding to, you know, email, texts, or whatever, when we want to talk to them. So I do want to thank you for coming today, but also.
I got you. We know.
We have breakfast almost there in the morning, so we'll be getting airful. I just want to say, I think these meetings, not only thank us for being here, but, you know, it's our responsibility to carry this message down there. And we are listening, and...